The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Stacy Green.
I am president.
Councilmember Kim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Paffini.
Here.
Mayor Susan Tabalero.
Here, thank you very much. Public business from the floor, members of the public wishing to address the council may do so before or during consideration of any item that has been described, but we don't have random.
In this note.
Yes.
Correct.
You guys say something, Ryan?
Would you like me to?
No. No, you can only speak, it's a special meeting, so you can only speak on something that's on the agenda tonight.
Oh, okay.
So there's no public comment. Did you have something to say?
I did. When do I not?
I know.
But it's just kind of an announcement.
But it's not anything on the agenda.
But it's not on the agenda.
Hmm?
It's just some good news.
It's up to the mayor.
Sure, don't ramble on, just make it quick.
I would, Mayor, if you're gonna allow one public comment, just if there's anybody else to make a public comment.
Yeah, there's not, so go ahead. The rest of them all are speaking.
I'm not, I'm speaking and leaving, sorry.
Okay.
I'm a busy girl now. Elizabeth Tabor, 242 Main Street. So I am in about two weeks, gonna open my third business in Weed.
Oh yay!
Yes, so we've already been inspected by the fire department, by John, and the health inspector has already been in, so we'll be preparing everything this weekend, and hopefully next weekend he'll come in and do the final sign-off, and we'll be opening our doors at 190 North Weed Boulevard.
What building is that?
Figure it out. We'll be announcing our grand opening, and that whole day you can come in and get one free.
Is it Rais? Did you buy Rais?
I wish!
Across the street.
Things smaller, things...
Oh, the Black Book Coffee Place?
Yes, which is gonna be Weed's Higher Grounds Coffee.
Oh!
Yes, but we also have food and other things too, so we've added additions to that, which has already been pre-approved from the county health inspectors.
The coffee place, she bought the little coffee hut.
The Black Book.
Yeah, it's a drive-through CB, no, I'm just kidding. There'll be none of that.
So drive-through coffee and little snackies?
We have food and stuff too, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, in the Napa Park.
Oh, yeah.
We're all excited to finally bring something new and some really cool stuff to the north end of town, where everyone lives and don't have to drive through the mess in South Weed anymore.
What's the name of the growing roots for Higher Grounds?
Higher Grounds Coffee. No pun intended.
Every pun intended.
Yes, so, I just want, I was excited, I'm so excited, because I'm getting tired of doing the same thing, and so, we hope everyone comes for our grand opening.
That's marvelous. Ryan, it's a good thing we let her speak, because that's great news.
And Ryan.
We will, we'll have cups, yeah.
I apologize for the record.
You couldn't see this, but he actually giggled when you said the name.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know.
And what are the hours going to be?
We're gonna be open seven days a week.
Yes.
We'll be open late on Friday and Saturdays for people that do night shifts. We have some discounts and things for local city, fire and police. We also have coffee, coffee thermos fills up for the truckers, because we have 4,500, we did a study, vehicles and trucks coming off of Highway 97 daily.
Wow.
Daily, that are having to go through our whole thing, and, yeah, so.
Are you having a ribbon, Connie?
Yeah, we will, because then...
What are your hours?
So, we'll be Sunday through Thursday, we'll be open at 5:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon, and then we'll be open late until 6:00 PM on Friday Saturdays.
But you're open every day at 5:00 AM?
Mmm. I have some that's gonna like that.
Berries, scones, muffin tops. We'll have lunch, soups and salads during the winter.
Nice.
So, yeah. And the health inspectors have already been in, just making that clear. We've already got everything signed off, so.
Thanks!
Just wanted to share that.
Yeah, thank you, you can go home. That's marvelous. I was actually just talking to the, a guy from Paradise, and they're rebuilding, and he was talking about how he likes to see a truck that has trusses show up, and I said, I always liked concrete trucks. Whenever I saw a concrete truck, I said, oh, somebody's building something. Something new, yay! Um, okay. You should've would've thought of it, huh? Councilmember announcements. Mr. Hall, would you like to go first, please?
I really don't have him much at all. We met regarding the dog park, that was pretty interesting, that was something that really seemed to, and there was a lot more to it, or a lot more value to it than I saw at first, and I haven't did, kind of quiet much, thank you.
Stacy?
Yes, I was on the homeless, it's a month-to-month coalition that, it's the same message that we get, different sponsors that come, shares information, but it's the same end result, money. And, but the city, not City of Hope, the Hope establishment, it should be open by this fall, but then I just saw, I got an email yesterday that there's gonna be a community meeting in Waireka, and I'll give you guys that information, I'll find it as we talk. But, yes, I've been on it for a while, and it just, Waireka has the biggest problem, because as you know, they have lots of transient activity, and they move it from place to place, and different sites keep getting inhabited, and it's just, it's an ongoing situation. I talked to a chief, and from what I remember being at the store, but what we have for traffic now, is not that many that we see, if you look at our streets, but there's still a high concentration at the truck stop, that people are, they're doing, asking for money, and they aren't, I know there's a lot of police activity that happens because of that sometimes, but that's the only increase that our city has at this time. And, what else? Just community members are wondering what's happening, you know, with our recent votes on the school issue, and the cats, they have their own interpretation. I said, read, because one person told me, you're trying to kill cats. No, if you say that, you're lying, I didn't say that. And so, those issues are coming up, and it's just normal stuff, but that's all I have.
Okay. Kim, what do you know?
So, the rec department, along with La Ferista, participated in trunk-or-treat Saturday night, and it was awesome. I guess there was like over 600 kids, from what I understand. It did, it doesn't need to go to 8 o'clock, because by 7, 7:15, they were mostly fizzled out, and it just happened to just start raining then, and so we got to go home early. But it was a really good event, and I'm sure it will continue. Let's see, the rec department is hosting a vendor pop-up on December 4th, which, the people that come to this are small, independent businesses, and people who don't do crafts, but they might sell Tupperware, or Avon, or 31 Bags, or, and they are really not allowed to go to the craft fair at the college, because they don't make their own items, but it's still their business. And so, we are going to hopefully fill up most of the rooms at the community center on December 4th with that event, and that day we will also have our giving tree ready. So, we did this last year, we're gonna continue on this year. This is, we took names and information for adults, children, any age of people who were in need for Christmas, and it was a really good event, and I don't even remember how many families we served last year, but I know, I think we spent two days delivering packages, didn't we? Yeah.
Did you guys deliver some?
Yeah, yeah, so that'll be happening too, so if you're, after, as soon as it gets up, hopefully by, well, it'll be ready by our next meeting, so, but anytime, come over and get somebody off of the tree, and make their Christmas. And I think that's, that's all I have.
Ken?
Actually, I attended, I have been attending a Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative Meeting, I'm a part of their board. It is a parent organization for all of the resource centers in the county, or actually, I shouldn't say all, but about six out of the eight. I would like to see in the future, I've been to the board meetings, and one of our constant complaints is trying to have funding that is unmarked funding, I guess you might put it, so we don't, so we can experiment with different programs. Currently, the city helps us with the senior luncheon, and we also throw on a, a community program for kids every summer, for a summer camp. That is an unfunded activity, where all of the members get pretty busy trying, and in particular, one of the audience out there, attempts to go get donors to support these events. We have a lot of room, because of a, kind of a little bit of a shortfall on people taking care of kids, or care for kids. In the future, I'd like to see if we can consider being a financial donor to the Weed Center. Another thing why we need to do this is we have managed to keep our center open throughout the pandemic, giving food, food vouchers, online parenting classes, lodging, travel vouchers, resource connections to county services, rental assistant applications. That really comes under the city purview, and I believe the CDBG grant that SEDC, I don't know if it was SEDC gave us, but we did get it, I think Great Northern handles it. I will tell you that the resource centers do handle most of the applications, because if you've called the Great Northern, you don't get a great response. I'm just gonna put that out there. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that, and possibly on our next budget go-around, maybe try and get some kind of allocation, either through TOT funding or something to supplement our programming. On another note, I also attended the SEDC annual meeting in McLeod, Siskiyou Economic Development Council. It was their annual, I guess their annual...
Fall.
Fall event, or whatever it's called, but it was very nice to get back in contact with our county partners from businesses and nonprofits all over the county, it was kind of, plus they did it via in-person and via Zoom, I think Tim was part of that as well. We heard a great presentation from an economist, and it was kind of refreshing that politics was kind of taken out of the mix, and we just listened to some facts, some figures that actually, taken out of the politic of the current climate in America. It's actually, we're doing pretty well, coming out of the pandemic, and that's what I got a big take from, so, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. I am on the transportation committee, but we don't meet till next Tuesday, and we're meeting a week early today, so nothing to report on that. I also sit on the Siskiyou County Resource Advisory Committee, and they put out, it's money that is for projects, fuel reduction, trail building, that kind of thing, and we met today, and we meet in two more weeks, and they have $1.1 million to give away in this, this year.
We'll take it.
So they're working on that, and that's, that's all I've had for committee meetings.
Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
I did think of something, I've spent the last few weeks talking to quite a few people regarding the school unification, and most everybody that I talked to, and everybody I've talked to, we said it's a good idea to do the study, but as I'm talking with you today, I want to remind people that we need to see, if you want this to happen, we need to see people come up and tell us that you want this to happen. It's really not ours, it's up to us to make the decision. I'm all for, everybody, I believe everybody on the council thinks it's a great idea, but it's not our call, it's gotta be the community, so, step up.
Go ahead.
I did remember one thing, it is North State Giving Tuesday coming up, so there are a lot of organizations looking for money. Again, I would like to give a shout-out to my resource center, it's always my pet peeve, but there are many other organizations out there that are worth your money, so if you have something to give, by all means, go on to the North State Giving Tuesday website and pick your favorite.
What day is that? Is that the 30th?
Yeah, it is the 30th.
Yeah, November, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
And if you get a letter from me, you can respond with $50 cash donations or larger.
And on, and on, from what Bob was saying, if anybody's out there watching, not only, you don't necessarily have to come here, but an email, an email to any or all of us would be nice also. Okay, moving on, First Five Presentation. Proclamation for the 14th Annual Read Across Siskiyou. Andrea.
On November 17th, well, first I should introduce myself, Andrea, here from the Family and Community Resource Center of Weed, I guess I could do this, so it's easier to hear me. And on November 17th, community members from around Siskiyou County will read to young children in kindergartens and childcare programs. They'll read a special book, Hedge Hugs, Autumn Hide and Squeak, and each child will get to take one home. This is an event, this event is Read Across Siskiyou, it's an annual event, and it's sponsored by First Five Siskiyou and the Resource Centers of our county. We would like to invite the community and you all to celebrate literacy with the children, with their parents, with their teachers, and the community. Literacy is the foundation of learning, it's also, reading is also a special time for parents to share, very close nurturing, you know, opportunity for parents, and also for teachers and children. We invite parents not only to read to their children every day, but to play and sing with them. These are the foundation for every aspect of children's development, and well-being, and happiness. So, we appreciate being here today, and I think Sue is going to...
I will read the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
But I'd also like to remind people that our county is fortunate enough to have the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, so if you have a child under the age of five, they qualify for a one book per month. Weed Rotary made a very generous donation to that two years ago, last year? So every child, you need to sign your child up right now. Because they start getting books at one month old, and they're all age-appropriate, and then when they turn five and they don't get them anymore, they're very sad, because their sister gets one, might happen, might be what's happening at my house, but, but yeah, that's a great program too.
And it's also one that will be featured in the North State Giving Tuesday.
Yes, Giving Tuesday.
And Sue and Stacy have graciously volunteered to read on Read Across Siskiyou, November 17th, and can, that's right.
Okay, so the proclamation of the 14th Annual Read Across Siskiyou event, sponsored by First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission, whereas the ultimate goal of the First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission is that all of Siskiyou's children from prenatal through five years of age will be healthy, ready to learn, and supported in safe nurturing families and communities. And whereas, children in Siskiyou County from prenatal through five years of age have a successful start in life through daily reading with supportive and nurturing families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas, early literacy is the foundation for academic, social, emotional, and economic success. And whereas, First Five Siskiyou, in partnership with Siskiyou County Library and the Family Community Resource Centers, dedicates one day each year to promote early literacy by providing the same titled book to be read by guest readers to children in various preschools, kindergartens, childcare settings, libraries, and online events throughout Siskiyou County on the same day, and provide each child with a copy of that book to take home. Therefore, the City of Weed hereby proclaims November 17th, 2021, as the 14th anniversary of Read Across Siskiyou, and be it that this body enthusiastically endorses daily reading, singing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for development and lifelong success. And this is the book.
Thank you.
Hedge Hugs.
Adam Horace.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. Corey Hayden, Community Initiatives and Investment, Siskiyou Economic Development Council. Quarterly update.
Yes, thank you guys for...
Will we see you next quarter?
You probably won't see moi.
Okay.
Little one arriving December 9th, first, first one, so, very cautiously excited, Thank you guys for making time for our organization today, especially when I know you just heard from Quentin with a CDBG update recently. I'm here to sort of round out and fill out additional messaging from our organization, to give you the holistic pitch and picture on what we've been working on, and of course, lots of gratitude to the City of Weed for several things. First of all, we brought in a stack of like 1,100 SBDC flyers, and your team graciously accepted them with a huge smile, and put them in circulation to be sent out with your other mailings, and so that was just a very generous opportunity for us to share that message out, so thank you guys for that. I'm gonna hand around some printables, and so you're gonna get two big things, our final report for last year, and a residency report that we spent about 18 months drafting with several partners from across Siskiyou County. It represents input from College of the Siskius, leading industries, Derek Grafton was on this team, representatives from different lodging properties, and it just provides about 26 pages of insight on directions that we can take for attracting younger populations, sharing business innovation stories for attraction, staying the course in the challenging road of development, which is not easy in our rural area. And so, this is just a compilation of information, research, top nine takeaways, that I've had a big part in putting together. We're just really proud to share this document, you can use it in your own decision-making, you can use it to pass on other messages, or inform constituents, or inspire projects, and so I'm just really glad to share these two big pieces, so first I'm gonna send these around. Thank you so much, Sandy, and then I'll send around two little things, once those like come through now. The little tiny, delicate things I'm gonna share today is a project that both Ken and Bob were involved in, over probably two years ago, but a group from across Siskiyou County envisioned My Town Itinerary, so this pocketbook concept that someone could pick up and know exactly what to do in every town and city in Siskiyou County, and so I'm really glad to share the first 100 of these with you today. This is our first run for feedback, but it really gives you the touch and the feel of this experience, and so it opens up to a map with great assets and visuals of what people can do in Siskiyou County, and then it's really fun, because the Weed and Mount Shasta layout is right next to each other, which creates this like really, like compact experience for someone to experience both of those communities, but every town and city is in this little booklet, so we brought these for you today to review and give any feedback that you would like, so I'm really proud to share that. And then just our most recent SBDC brochure, this is something that I could bring a stack of, I have some extras that could be on-hand at City Hall, and the photographs are of our local businesses as well, so, just some fun things for you guys to have in your hands today, and I don't mind if you flip through them while I'm talking, that's always good news to me, and all of them are documents we're really proud of to share today. And thank you, Bob and Ken, for your work on that project.
That was fun.
We really appreciate that. So, Ken made a great mention of our annual meeting, and I reached out to Sandy and asked who you guys use for tech, and she introduced us to Jeremy in 22nd Avenue, and his expertise and management made that event. I can't thank you guys enough for that referral, and we are just championing their services all over the county because of what they did for us, so I just wanna thank you guys for that, it's my second thank you of the evening, so.
We like him.
Wow, wow.
He's gonna have to move, Mrs. Speaker.
Although, he does kind of get mad at us if we don't turn on our microphones.
Oh man, so Jeremy's gonna click through a series of slides unless he gives me the clicker, which is no problem. There's some familiar faces on the screen to you, this is what we call your Team Siskiyou. We have Tonya Douse, Quentin Gaddy, Heather Dodds, myself, and the new face there you see is Alia, and she oversees Brownfields, and so there is a few more of us, but those are the faces that you might see the most in conversations or meetings, so we're really appreciative of the knowledge that each of us bring to your, to your crew and your city, so we're glad to be your Team Siskiyou. I always come in and remind you what we do, because I know sometimes you ask, what exactly is the EDC doing? So I love to answer this question every time, so this little roadmap just shows you six things that we feel confident that we provide service in with your city. So, over the years, and currently, we've had several grant collaborations, we're working together to leverage funding for the city specifically. We are your go-to organization for business attraction, this involves responding to state RFIs for location in Siskiyou County, where the official entity that puts together a pretty substantial packet to try to attract businesses citing California specifically to Siskiyou County. We oversee a comprehensive program of business development, that's usually, I'll just say, like, delivered through the Small Business Development Center, that was an excellent strategy that the cities requested in 2016 to be made possible in Siskiyou County to mitigate unemployment. We've just received renewal for the next five-year term, so that means we're doing a great job, and they're really happy with this work, and so we're excited to announce that. Discover Siskiyou is the region's tourism improvement district. Something new and exciting is that through the success of this particular assessment, this organization will be working with a $1 million marketing budget this year to promote Siskiyou County. So this is a new benchmark achievement. In the first years of Discover Siskiyou, the revenue allowed for about $600,000 to be utilized, and now based off a percentage of the revenue of the assessment, they're able to invest $1 million. So this is an exciting benchmark. The next thing, number five, Brownfield's Assessment, if in a project it requires any assessment for cleanup, there is grant funds available to perform that assessment for you on a site, to help you learn or become informed about any contamination that might be there, that might be, need to be addressed. And so, just remember, that's a service that we offer as well, that can be a helpful step for development. It's a teeny-tiny, I would just say, keystone in a chain of events that can lead to development. The last thing we work on frequently is that three-step process, feasibility, planning, can we help you get shovel-ready for a project? Shovel-ready is when everything is prepared, planned out, and funding becomes available, and so we do want to help you walk through those two initial steps of feasibility and planning to become shovel-ready. Oftentimes, there is funding available for thinking, planning, researching, in order to get ready for, for something shovel-ready. So, that's just, in general, the six things I feel like we provide as much as possible, as much as you ask, we want to deliver those things. So, go ahead and go to the next one, Jeremy, thank you. So this just, business attraction, my latest announcements are, we continue to be respondents to the GoBiz. to the GoBiz process for RFIs. Rural is having a moment right now following the pandemic. There is more interest in rural than we have seen in the past five years in terms of available land, lower population density, maybe a little less disruption in the supply chain, and so we've certainly seen more activity and interest. We're an advocate for broadband infrastructure planning. Right now, the county is considering writing a master broadband plan and we continue to wave our flag of support in that, in that project. We think that's a really good investment of some funding and time through EDA that's available that we hope, we hope will come to fruition. I already mentioned the regional resiliency report, I hope you find it useful in your work and your communications and I'm really proud to present that today. Go ahead and go next slide Jeremy, thank you. Our SBDC, again, five-year renewal, so this service will continue seamlessly from 21 to 20, 2026. We wanna thank you for your letter of support, which accompanied our application, cuz that, when we demonstrate regional support, we are a much more successful applicant for resources and funding to benefit Siskiess County. The final report that I gave you does have comprehensive metrics on performance for last year, including number of businesses served, number of jobs retained, and then the amount of capital that we were able to leverage to be accessible to, to businesses. That's something like Quentin has talked about quite a bit with CDBG. There were three major grant programs that came through where we were helping connect businesses to those funding programs and they're still coming. And so thank you for always relaying that information to your constituents and your businesses. We really, really appreciate that help. Let's see, one helpful tip I like to remind council is Ford family funding for parks or community facilities or capacity. We at the EDC try to at least apply for $5,000 in funding every year for capacity. This can help a person attend a training or expand their professional development. And so the, the foundation is really open to an application from any city government or nonprofit in Siskiess County and they let us know, they really are in, they invite that application to come through annually. So I always wanna encourage your team to take advantage of that funding cuz they're so friendly in their application process. I'm hearing about your project with the dog parks, so remember they do invest up to $25,000 for, for parks. And so even if, if your funding streams can't quite cover all costs, that's an area where Ford likes to, you know, be last dollar in and provide assistance. And then for community spaces, that funding can be up to 250,000. And so I like to champion that opportunity. We also continue to, to be a very appreciative partner every time EDA has some funding, they often pick up the phone and they say, hey, does Weed need any EDA funding? And so we'd love to convene that as well between, between that federal program. All right, we can go next slide. I mentioned grant collaborations already, so I'll just let Jeremy click one more for me. Brownfields Assessment, again, just let us know if there's a site you would like to learn more about and we would love to go back to this grant committee and propose that site for, for a Phase One or a Phase Two assessment. Next slide, the fun one, Discover Siskiess. So what is most exciting or interesting right now is the local initiatives program has launched and will be open between now and December 31st. That means that for your local groups, organizations, or residents who are planning exceptional events for the Weed community can apply for direct funding. And so I brought that application today to share with all of you, so this is the last thing I'm gonna send down the pipeline. And so this is funding that your hotel lodging properties set aside because they wanna support your efforts and continue to support activities that will place heads in beds in their hotels right here in Weed. And so I think I gave you, oh yes, oh so here, it's about $14,000 that's available in local initiatives funding specifically for events in Weed. And I've just given you guys the application. And so this is a great program to help support some of your favorite events in Weed. Basically, the application window will close December 31st and then reopen again later in the spring. So there's two rounds of funding that your either chamber or organizations or partners can apply for. So this is probably familiar to you. It did pause during COVID, but it is back again, so this is great news. And we just, again, are very gracious to the Weed Lodging Properties who make this funding What else do I wanna tell you? So some of the exciting things that are happening with Discover Siskiess, right now, they are working collaboratively, collaboratively with Mount Shasta and Ashland to pitch the concept of skiing two mountains in one weekend. And guess who's in the middle of Mount Shasta and Ashland? So I do hope that many of those travelers will stop for food and eat and drink in Weed when they fuel up to get on the road to head north to Mount Ashland. So that's a really exciting venture to watch take place. You will see more, more billboards in Sacramento in the spring and late summer. Some of you may have seen or heard about billboards in the, in the past months. It always shows just something stunning and amazing and eye-catching, especially when you're stuck in traffic in Sacramento and you see the beautiful blue skies and white caps on Mount Shasta. And so we know that those are catching attention in that area. One of our most exciting achievements with Discover Siskiess was a companion effort with Expedia. And so Expedia ran a special where they highlighted Siskiess County lodging specifically and they were able to return very clear numbers about that campaign. And so from the Expedia campaign, which ran from April to June last year, Weed received 246 nights booked, which was $33,000 in revenue. And so it's so exciting when we can really point to a specific campaign being this rewarding. And so we're gonna continue to be investing in some Expedia campaigns and we'll continue to share back results, so. The last thing, and if Jeremy can navigate the technology of that link, it will show you what we call the what-if video. And so the what-if video is running right now on Amazon and Hulu for, so for some of you who stream at home, you might catch this video. And it's gonna be quick and, and it's going to just, it's, it's a companion video to a Visit California concept and then the Siskiess County concept. So the first thing that's gonna hit you is the Siskiess County concept and then you'll slowly see the companion Visit California piece. So it will be exciting and, and, and interesting. It might not totally make sense, but when you see it on Hulu or Amazon, I bet you'll be impressed. Jeremy, what do you think? I know, that's okay. It is. See, look at Jeremy go. He played this at the very, very end of our, of our presentation, so. So grateful, just give him one second. While he's looking, does anyone have any questions at all about those topics or areas for me? Yeah.
I do. Thank you for the color in the advertisement. I did recruitment advertising for Silicon Valley. I love the colors and what you've done, eight years are great. I just had a question, we talked, you talked about Brownfields Assessment.
Yes.
I know a few years, four or five years ago, we had some type of inquiry or something that, that came with that. Do you recall what that was and what was the outcome of that?
I asked my colleague Alia today what the historical kind of engagement with Brownfields might have been for Weed. And so I, if we did a site development, I'm kind of trying to, or a site assessment, I'm trying to think of where it might have been. I don't know exactly if it would have been on Vista or, it wouldn't have been on the Rec Center area, but I'll get back to you with a history, kind of a history of Brownfield specifically in Weed. And we might know more about what you might wanna assess than you do, so we can provide that information as well.
Well, I asked that because there was talk about some implementation of this effort to make more housing available in Weed and I, I didn't know where that, when we talked about it, then it kinda fizzled, so I didn't know.
Okay, I'll find out, I'll follow back up.
I bet that was, I bet it was the, the park property, the new park property where the community center is, was supposed to be a housing.
Okay, that would make sense.
That's what, what's his name had planned for it.
Is there any other questions before Jeremy hits play on this razzle-dazzle piece of media? Okay Jeremy, thank you for that.
Here in California, we believe in what if. After all, if is our middle name. Like what if we could go surfing and skiing in the same day? Boom, here we welcome all what ifs with open arms. After all, there's only one wrong way to what if. What if you don't?
So the, the way you'll see that roll out is the concept of Visit California's what-if concept paired with the Siskiess County what-if concept. So watch for that on some of your streaming and we're really glad to share that.
That commercial is on national across the world. I've seen that.
Have you seen it?
And that, and that's yours?
That's the, the, the piece, you can see the piece, the Discover Siskiess piece that will run with it, so.
That first one with the African-American on yellow, I just remember that.
Yes.
She's stunning and she, and she, it's, it's very, very eye-catching, the whole of it.
Exactly.
Wonderful, wow, that's great.
Thanks you guys for your time, we really, really appreciate it. Ken?
Just to let you know that Mount Shasta Weed and Denzimer did do a broadband study. I'm not sure all that paperwork is, but we could probably locate it and might save a couple steps.
That'd be great.
And actually, I was just kind of, the video that we're showing on that economic piece, is that, it was zoomed, is that recorded?
Yes, we recorded all two hours of Monday's meeting and the full presentation by Dr. Chris Thornburg and his slides, and I'm glad to share that with council and with staff. I'd be glad to do that. It's, it's compelling.
I think it's a very good, non-political piece that kinda just gives an indication of where Siskiess County cities are themselves, counties are, state and fed. It just gives a good overall picture.
Yep, I'd love to share that with you guys.
Are cities specifically identified and given information or just a general?
It's a, it was more general, but there's identifiable pieces in all of it. He actually had a very good, clear presentation, almost too much information to handle at one sit-down. So many graphs and stuff, so a slowed-down version would be good.
Yes, yes.
And a pause.
I think he had 51 slides. And, but, but just humorous at the right moments, intelligent in some refreshing ways. He was general, but also took some time to dive into Siskiess County specifically. It was, in, in his, his presentation, we were able to get local sponsors to make that event available, but we, we invested $5,000 in him and I felt like the content and the, and the value was there for, for the audience. So when you watch it, you can know it's a, it's a $5,000 presentation.
It's very good.
Yep, thank you everyone.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Cory?
Yes.
I wanted, wanna say you rock.
Thank you.
And also, you're gonna be a great mom and you're just glowing right now.
Oh boy, look out, look out.
You're glowing.
Right on. Thank you Bob.
We'll be thinking about you on the ninth.
Hopefully the eighth.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Which one you want Sandy?
Either one, Bob can do it.
Go with the pretty one.
He's, I was gonna say you're prettier.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to council business. An agreement, approve agreement with PACE Engineering for rate study. Craig, Tim, which one?
Hi everybody, go first.
I gotta do it. This is a rate study that we need to do on our water and sewer system. The last one was conducted five years ago, this one will be done for another five years, so hopefully we can have our rates looked at and increased or brought to you for increase before our July billing, so we can hit the, the brand-new fiscal year. And we'll also be asking for an ad hoc committee like we had last time, I think Kim was on that, and Sue Stone and some others, so we'll, we'll look at that again and, and get that group going. If, if we approve this contract, we'll get PACE started on it.
How long does that study take? You're saying it needs, you wanna have it done before July?
Yes.
Before the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's three or four months?
The second page has all the.
I know.
Okay.
I saw that in the, in my.
Yeah.
My computer.
You get a council presentation in March.
Okay, good, all right.
And then we'll set the hearings and start in April.
Yeah, okay, good.
Uh, when do you, are you gonna reach out to the people that were on the other committee or are you organizing a new one?
I, I believe, I, I don't know if we should try to put some new ones on there or, or go with the same ones. I, I believe the same ones would be okay because, you know, they've already been through it once, so.
Okay.
I think it'd be good.
I can talk to Dave.
Okay.
And see if he's interested.
Who was David? Okay.
Uh, who else, who else was on it?
Sue Stone, Dave, Margaret Dean.
I think that was it.
Yeah.
Why, why don't we also open up to the community, some members might have not known about it, well, well, can be assistance to it. Always good to open when you have a community then.
I think primarily it's just a selection, who did the selection last year? I think we just came up with suggestions for names and picked five, wasn't it?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
So if you have somebody in mind, of course, I mean that's.
Yeah, let Craig know.
Let me know.
Yeah.
Now, this, this study's gonna cost us $32,554, that's a pretty specific number, is that the, and 49 cents, but is, is that actually the overall cost or is that just a projected estimate?
No, it, it will not exceed that.
Okay.
Unless there's something unforeseen come up.
Taxes, tax included, okay.
I do have a question. Since it happened five years ago, what transpired out of that event that happened in the last five years that kinda equates to what our, our fee was used for? Has anything happened because of that?
We, we have increased fees for the last five years with water and sewer because of the rate study. You can't increase them without a rate study and going through the 218 process, so this will keep us current.
Any other advantages besides fees increase for that, for that publication or event, whatever it's called?
Well, sure, cuz you're, you're looking at the books, you're looking at numbers and you're seeing, you know, if there's places monies could be saved or this kinda stuff, you know, that's, that's all part of it, we're.
Fixes, upgrades, that kinda thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's primarily what we, we, we look at it, long-term wise, Council Member Green is, some of the equipment, some of the stuff that we need, that, I mean, the price of doing business continues to escalate every single year, especially concrete, steel, the whole thing. And so this is just something to help keep us afloat and from falling behind, so.
Thank you for the specific information, cuz what questions I get, like what do you have these probes for? You do something and five years later you're playing for it again? So it's good to mention that, what has been done because of that.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you for the details.
Do we raise it every five years or do we set it and raise it every year?
Every year, is the way it was set.
But, but five years ago, we decided what we were gonna raise it every year, so we knew what it was gonna be five years down the road?
Correct.
Okay.
We thought.
No, 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 we knew, we knew what we were going to raise it to.
Yeah.
Yeah, those rates are set for the five years, okay.
But it's gonna be different now cuz it's five years later, right?
Right, yeah, and they'll have the new five years.
They'll have a five-year plan.
Yep, new five-year plan. Okay, we have a motion.
I make a motion to, to that we approve the agreement with PACE Engineering for the rate study.
Thank you Bob.
I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with PACE Engineering for a rate study, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, staff reports. Justin, you got anything?
I have nothing at this time, unless you have any questions.
Couple of open positions, have you got any applicants for just police officer or dispatch?
Uh, no, we have not received any applications. Uh, we may have had, I was told we may have a couple dispatcher applications, I haven't confirmed that, I was just told that today, but as far as police officers, we haven't had any applications.
Is there an academy happening right now?
Uh, there's academies happening, Redwoods, Butte, and locally here at College of the Siskies.
Okay.
But we have not received any applicants.
Are they a semester academy?
Uh, it's typically based on hours, it doesn't run, it doesn't always run simultaneous as a semester. It's 900 and I'm not sure what Siskies is at hour-wise right now, but typically it's around 930 hours total.
Do you know if there's any local, anybody local in the academies?
Um, there was one local that I know of, he did apply and then with. Um, there was one local that I know of. He did apply, and then withdrew. Uh, he accepted a position with another agency in the county.
Thank you. Craig?
Uh, just real quick, Vista Drive is moving along. It looks like we're going to get the concrete portion of it done this winter, and be opened up, so.
By the end of November?
It looks we're gonna be close.
I know, the concrete, the concrete's done, isn't it?
No, there's a little bit more to go, but we're getting there. We're getting there.
No, it was, it, they were pouring concrete when we drove through yesterday.
Yeah, and again today.
A concrete truck. Love concrete trucks. Um, Emily, do you have anything to say?
Horrible.
Horrible.
Uh, my last official date as a City of Weed employee will be, uh, November eighteenth. I will continue to assist in every way I possibly can until we can find, uh, a suitable replacement. Luckily, I've worked out with Tim that I can kind of check in and help out with things here and there. Everybody has my cellphone number, so.
You're gonna miss us.
I am gonna miss ya. I am, I am. I have appreciated this opportunity and...
Have we gotten any applications yet for this position?
We, we are currently, um, advertising in three major, what I would consider, uh, publications online. Western Cities through the Cal Cities, the Society of Municipal Financial Officers for the State, which right now has thirty-three finance director positions open throughout the state. So, uh, to answer your question, we've received one in two weeks, uh, and so it's, it's, it's about as difficult as recruiting a police officer or a, a dispatcher right now. It, it, the, the market is really tough, uh, the, the labor market is right now. So, we are, we are, but we are actively, we've got it the first round going through November the twelfth, so I suspect there'll be a few that'll trickle in maybe next week, maybe not. We'll see, so.
I would say, if you listen to that little video presentation for The Economist, that there was a lot of insight into why there is such a shortage of manpower, and, and it, there's, if you took the politic out of it, it's a lot of us, like me and Younger, have elected to discontinue working.
The boomers are leaving early. That's what's going on right now, and it's causing a huge shortage.
Have we posted locally, in case maybe somebody at CPA's office might...
Uh, we, I don't know if we've done that yet, but we can, we can certainly do that. We posted, uh, like I said, on several job boards, but we can, we can do that, too, so. Yeah.
Um, I actually talked, I get the job listing emailed to me every week, and I replied last week, um, I don't see the City of Weed went on here, and so she was gonna go onto our site and add it to that job.
Yeah, we have it on our, our, our website, too, so she can put the link on there.
'Cause it goes out to several different agencies throughout the county, and like, we always print it and hang it on our board, and somebody was looking at it, actually, when I walked out tonight, so.
Well, that's good. I mean, the, the, the problem and the issue is finding somebody that has experience.
Qualifications.
Yeah, the qualifications, 'cause it's not, I've, I've hired folks that are, you know, straight out of the private sector and coming into a city, and the deer in the headlights looks, and so it's, it's tough, or, and I've also hired folks that have come from big agencies to smaller one, and they were used to having, you know, a staff of ten do what they're supposed to be doing now, and it's overwhelming.
All by themselves.
All by themselves, and it's gonna be overwhelming. It's, it's a niche market, that's for sure, so.
Well, Emily was local. Where did you pick up the ad when we were advertising, when you took the position?
Uh, actually, we're, somebody else was looking to beat the county, and they said, hey, this'd be perfect for you.
Okay.
Referrals are the number one leads in employment.
I think it's important to, when I passed on the word the other day with hairdressers, and anybody that's with the public right now, I, I certainly would like to see something where, I mean, we, 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 we need some roots. We can't continue, I mean, I know you had to do what you had to do, but, uh, we've gotta look, look at that. I mean, that's not something that we can just continue, uh, being, uh, you know, a blind policy that, uh, we don't look at that, because, you know, we won't, hopefully, we would like, we, we, we hope you came to retire here, and we want people to retire here.
Well, I think advertising local is not a bad thing. One, there are a number of folks that are probably in positions that they could well fill a position here. Sometimes you take a job because you need the job. Doesn't mean that's the one you want, but...
The more skin you have in the game, the better.
Okay, thanks, Emily. Um, Steve and your co-captain Brian?
Chief. Not captain.
Co-chief Brian.
Yeah. Um, so the first thing is, I attended a CSA three meeting. Siskiyou County Service Area Three, it's tax money. I did receive, uh, equipment for our new rescue unit. An AD, an auto pulse with two bags, and a suction unit, and believe it or not, just that equipment right there was thirty-five thousand dollars with their equipment, and we got it for free, so.
Good.
It's already been delivered to the station.
We like free.
We like free. That's good, huh?
Well, we, we pay our taxes to the...
Yeah, you pay your taxes.
So, yeah, it's, we already...
But the money is used for just EMS equipment, period. That's all.
In the county, yeah.
Through the county, through this, our area. And then I would like to, um, talk about sort of a situation that I heard that somebody was concerned that our budget is right now sixty-five percent spent, and why do we have Brian and I here versus the contract with CalFire when that happened? So, I actually, I don't know how that transpired, 'cause I wasn't here. Darren Quigley was the chief, and Sue was on the board who hired me. I actually talked to Darren Quigley today, and I asked him, hey, why did the City of Weed get rid of the contract with CalFire and hire both of us, and what's the advantage to that? And he told me, plain and simple, the budget was two, about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the equipment, and then a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars for the part-time chief that wasn't here all the time. So, for our two positions, we got the same amount of money as one part-time chief, and we cover twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. You have coverage in the city of a chief officer.
And right soon after that, CalFire got an eight percent raise.
Right.
I enjoyed it, but, yeah, as a city, and not as a city council person.
And then he said that he was retiring, and the new battalion chief, 'cause it's up to battalion chief of this area, didn't want anything to do with weed and said, get rid of it. We don't want it. And now, if you were to contract with CalFire, they would make you spend it on two battalion chiefs instead of one, because they wouldn't do it with one anymore, because it was a, the guy can never take a day off, so that wouldn't happen.
CalFire is still now connected, not with weed, but the place, how the word's called, where the lady goes on the lake, what's it called? Starts with H, I'm just brain farting right now.
Ham or ranch?
So, CalFire, CalFire is, is connected with them now, right?
CalFire is responsible for them, yes.
And that's, I still see that part of weed, but...
'Cause it's in the county.
But they're, uh, contracting with CalFire.
No.
CalFire has to do it, because there's nobody there.
Right.
It's interesting how the business kind of changed in, in a few...
They all show up, so.
And actually, answered, or not answered, but responding to that, we actually did that move because we did save money.
Yes.
Si- significant, especially after the raise, the increases started piling up. I don't know about where the questions came from. When I looked at the budget, my biggest question is, was kind of, there was an imbalance showing. I don't know if I'm the one you're addressing, but if it is, what I was looking at was there was an imbalance. In other words, just the percentage of your budget was just...
Right.
Already expended.
That's why he's...
And it was his fault.
He's gonna explain it. That's why he came tonight. 'Cause that's next. We're gonna explain that.
Okay.
Because it, when you look on paper, you're like, whoa, you're spending a lot of money.
And that's all I have.
And I wasn't addressing, I don't know who it came from, I don't know.
Oh, I, I know that I had mentioned it, so I, I'm...
And it's just a question, and we're just here to give information, so, you know, we're providing the information back.
Well, and another thing that happened at the time, because I was, happened to be in the note on it, was, uh, we had a captain that worked down there, and, and he was there three days a week, four days a week?
Four.
Um, and he didn't live here, and when we requested a captain that lived, a captain that lived here in town, it, CalFire said, no, you can't have him, because he's doing something else. But in, in the big picture, he's a captain, so he could've come here, and they told us no. And that was part of the other reason why we said, well, because it's nice to have people that live in your town, they're invested in your town.
Right.
They, not that the, the captain that they had there was good.
Sure.
He was good.
I'm not saying anything bad about CalFire either.
But he, you know, at some point, they move on.
Yeah, and I can tell you that Chief Carter and I, we work together, and we try to make ourselves self-sufficient in our department. One reason, one way is bringing on the new type-three, and you're gonna see that the ambulance is gonna make us money in a different way than, other than transporting patients, but sending it to wildland fires this next year. It wasn't ready this year, so it couldn't make any money with it this year, but next year, it's gonna make money on fires, go into fire assignments. So, um, and the other rumor that went around was, we don't like each other. We hate each other.
Those Carter children.
Why don't get involved with that? I don't care if you like each other or not.
I'm just addressing it because it came from a, a meeting of people in the community, and it's not true.
It's just those kids.
So...
Welcome to small town.
That's what I said.
Let me address the, why we're now sixty-five percent spent, and I'll give it to Chief Carter.
Uh, okay, so the first...
Here's a microphone.
Sorry. First document I gave you was a outline of the calls we've gone on so far this year.
Could I get a copy of that?
Yeah. Sorry, I got one for you.
We have one Brian, and you're just in the pile, too.
No, that, that's the new one. Yeah, that's the, Sandy made new ones.
So, report. Just, uh, list of, uh, what we've responded to so far. Six-hundred-and-sixty-nine calls. You can see the percentage of those. With that, we're on track to, uh, in the year with about eight-hundred calls. Just to reference that, last year, we had six-hundred-and-sixty-three, so it's a little bit of an increase. And, uh, the next thing you'll see is just a list of estimates for the reimbursements that we've had. Uh, so far, a note would be that not everything has been received yet, but we just wanted to give you an idea of the different things that we've been involved in throughout the year. So, you can see, uh, just the different, uh, incidents and planned events that we have been involved in, and how that can apply, um, to what we do.
Why was there two lava fire assignments, the first and the second?
Uh, one was, I believe, the first day...
Yeah.
That it came towards Kerik.
Yeah.
And then the next time was when we were assigned to it, when it got changed to a different team, and we were there...
Oh, out in Shasta.
By Mount Shasta.
The first one was emergency response.
Yeah, okay.
Gary and I went with Engine Twelve Ten.
Yeah.
To protect structures.
And it was similar, you see, the antelope was on there twice also, kind of the same thing. Antelope, we went there on the first day, emergency response, and they released us, and then the next time we went, it was burning into tinit, and they called us for structural protection for that. Just kind of a report on what we've been doing this year. Little different than the previous years, so we figured we'd give you the information.
Where's the admin fee go?
It goes to the city for, uh, administration costs.
Which would be...
Goes back to their budget to pay for their salaries.
Oh, right, right, okay. Yeah.
The, the, the admin fee is put on top of the total cost of the incident, and it can be...
It's charged to the incident.
Correct.
Yes, okay, yeah. So, it could go anywhere, but yeah, I get it. Okay.
That's it.
Thanks.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to go back to Emily. Emily, when you came here, you took over a department that we knew for a long time had some issues, and you rolled your sleeves up, and you've been a trooper. I mean, I, we, I hate, we hate to see you go, but you really kicked butt. You really did. I mean, you, I mean, it was tough. I know it was tough. Thank you for what you did.
There was a lot of coconut moving.
Yeah, thank you. Um, whoever takes the job's gonna have a lot easier time than, than, uh, than you did. Thank you.
I have to say, it was the entire team pulling together and understanding the situation and really diving in to make sure that we were successful, so.
Thank you.
And thank you for that, but in recruitment for, at your level, I appreciate you doing what you do, 'cause I've seen it hands-on, bottom of the floor, sneakers to the floor, however you said, and not, not a lot of people do that in that level, and I appreciate that. That says a lot about your character, so thank you for what you've done.
I have, I have an amazing team. I wouldn't want to go through a pandemic without Diana ever having. I will define her woman. I'm like, no, you're mine.
Yeah, you're not taking...
Yeah, you can't take her with you.
You can't call her for over there.
Yeah.
We're, we're changing our phone number.
Uh, okay, Sandy? Ryan, do you have a report?
No report.
How's the dog?
She's doing, well, we, we moved last weekend, and so we basically, and they're still working on our house, so we've basically been living in a, our little studio, small bedroom right now, so, um...
So, she's just okay?
She's not loving that, but she's, uh, it's, we're working through it as a family.
Tell her what you're thinking about her.
I will.
Is it close to a dog park?
Yeah, we, I mean, we walk and stuff, but it's, it's been very busy moving, and we've been painting, and...
Well, soon you'll be able to bring her with you and stop at our dog park.
That's a very good point, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll keep it in mind.
That'd be a great idea. Um, Tim?
Uh, nothing to report. What, is there something you want me to report? You look really disappointed.
How are your dogs?
My dogs are great.
Rabbit's fine?
The rabbit's doing great. We're bringing them in at night, 'cause it's too cold, so.
Yeah? How are your dogs?
How are your cows?
My cows are fabulous. My dogs are... Cobra crimson cat is wonderful.
How's your feral cat?
He's great.
Five. Oh, the big orange one that I'm watching for.
Uh-oh.
Hopefully, my dogs scare him off.
I, I, I will say, I, I will say, and, and, and following up with, Bob kind of stole my thunder a little bit, but I want to add, with, with Emily's, uh, situation, when I came here, it was not the, it was a little bit bleak.
Yeah, no, remember, we didn't tell you that.
I know, I know.
You still signed the contract.
I know.
It wasn't that bleak when we were starting the hiring process, okay?
Yeah, I know there was no, uh, pandemic going on either at the time, so, but, uh, no, we, we did an excellent job, and, 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 and she especially, on keeping us on track, and, and the other thing that went on behind the scenes that maybe wasn't quite visible with you guys was all the work she did with the EDD and the WorkShare program, and trying, 'cause with the furloughs and making sure our employees got reimbursed for a portion of that, it really, it, it, it worked out nicely for the employees to not lose as much as they did, and we appreciate all the employees' sacrifice and what they were able to go through, and, uh, like I said, you know, we, we, we've gone through some bumps, and we're still gonna probably have a few more bumps, and, uh, you know, especially with the recruitment process, with, with the labor shortage right now. It's gonna be, it's gonna be tough, but we can get there, so, and, uh, maybe, Ken, you want to retire and then become a cop, so?
They need to run. They have to come to me.
Come, come here, let my handcuff you, so, but, uh, anyway, that, it's, 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 uh, been a... It's been a challenging year, uh, on, on the financial side, but, uh, we are recovering nicely, and I'm hoping that the light is at the end of the tunnel. Um, our sales tax is starting to pick up, uh, where it should be. People kind of sometimes see the, the numbers, and they go, oh, my God, it's way up, but you have to understand, compared to the last time last year, it was way, way down, so...
Right.
It, it's not always, uh, as it appears, so, but, uh, yeah, again, like I say, big kudos to her and the rest of the staff with working with her and, and trying to get this thing done, and for going through the budget process last year, too, and get the two-year budget done, which whoever takes this job will have it a little bit of a cushion, because we're just gonna make adjustments next year and not have to go through the full budget process again, 'cause we already have a budget laid out for twenty-two, twenty-three. I can't even believe I'm saying that, twenty-two, twenty-three. That's crazy. Um, so anyway, but we'll, but it, it, we're gonna do a lot more recruiting and try to find, you know, I'd love to find somebody local if we could, if they have the qualifications, that'd be great, but, um, we just want to make sure we get the right person, uh, hired, so.
Tim, I, I know you can't share all the business prospects, but I was supersided by what you do, your weekly information, when you talked about the joining of owners of certain businesses and the possibility going forward. I, I wish the public could hear that, because about the palace and the building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a great point. I'm glad you brought that up. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a great point. I'm glad you brought that up. Um, the Palace Theater uh was uh purchased by two gentlemen out of Ashland. Um, I think Jack Stoll and Jason Gallagher, I believe their names are. They've run the uh Ashland Armory for a number of years. Great venue. I've not, I haven't been to that venue, uh, but I've heard people that have gone to the concerts, it's really nice. They are pulling up stakes and putting all their eggs in the weed basket, and they are excited. They're also uh in the process of purchasing the bowling alley. Uh, he did tell me they're going to take out a few lanes, but they're also going to open up a um a restaurant back there. So there's a lot of of stuff uh going on with that, and um they've got some investors that are going to be coming here in the next couple of weeks to to look at some potential uh other things that they're wanting to do as well, but not only are they going to come here and open up the palace, I mean, the first thing they're going to do is do some mold remediation, repair the roof, start working, you know, the chairs in there are in bad shape, just really.
They're older than.
I know. I I I've only been in there once, but I was kind of surprised, like.
That's the second set of chairs.
The first set right there.
They're the same ones I sat on.
Yeah.
Those are the first set right there.
Yeah, so anyway, they're they're going to to do that, and um they're also going to be bringing some of their um uh, what I want to call a record recording, I don't know what the, the, you know, studios, they're just going to be setting up a recording studios for people to be able to um cut albums, do those type of things. So it's it's very exciting, and and we're ecstatic to have them here, because I think something like that could be the catalyst to rejuvenate our Main Street and get more people down to Main Street, and and, you know, I know a lot of people, you know, certain been, uh, uh, business owners up here on the North Side get a little sore about what's all going down on the South Side, especially with all the, you know, what what's going on with Vista and and some of the things, but I I've assured them, we're still just as focused on on Main Street and up here as well, so.
And there have been some purchases recently in on Main Street, so.
Oh, yeah.
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 And we're being held hostage.
We still have that issue.
I can't comment on that. I'm not allowed to comment on that. One step at a time, yes.
So I have a question about Main Street. When I was at the trunk-or-treat, I saw the lights and people moving around inside the bakery building.
Yes.
Yeah.
I I I I'm not going to give a a a a an Elizabeth Tabor plug here, but I I will just tell you that, and I'm just kidding with Elizabeth. But uh, I I, but yes, we have, uh, my wife, not me, but my wife has a tenant already in the building, and uh just let you guys know, we're spending, she and I are also spending a lot of nights and weekends up there doing a lot of work. You will not recognize the inside of that building once it's done, with all the sheet rocking, the repairs, the ceilings, the uh um, the garage door, we're we're taking out the garage door and putting in a couple of steel doors, uh, so we can have ADA excess around the back of the building, so instead of having to do anything to the front, we decided we'd rather invest it, put it back there, so. What a lot of older buildings do that, where you push a button buzz, and then somebody will come let you into the store from that side of the building as well, so. Um, that's something that uh we really didn't want to disrupt. That's a beautiful building. It's got a lot of history in it, a lot of history, stuff I'm learning too, through the new owners, but anyway, um, or the new, the new tenants, rather, so. Um, but yes, it's going to be, I don't know how, Al- Alchemy, I believe it's pronounced, uh, shop, where there's going to be, they have one in Ashland where it's a lot of remedy stuff that you can do. Candles, uh.
Apothecary.
Huh?
Isn't it apothecary, isn't it?
I don't know. I I can't get into all of it. She can explain to you.
But this ensures your overall commitment to weed.
Yeah, it does.
Because you'll be in debt.
I I assumed it was people working on the building.
Oh, there's some of that going on too. Yeah, there was contractors there last night working, so uh, my wife uh runs a tight ship with those contractors. Uh, I would not want to work for her as a contractor, so anyway, uh, but she's she's doing a great job, and we're excited about and it, and I, and I'm not tooting our own horn, but it just shows you can buy an old building, put some money into it, and get it leased out pretty quickly if you just do the work. That's all I got to say about that, so.
There's a few things that are happening. I do have one other comment I didn't get a chance to ask uh our fire chief. Are we still, and you, are we still having discussions with uh with the Hammond Fire Department?
Yes, um, Chief Duncan and I had a a call with Chief Anzo, who is retiring, I guess, pretty soon, right? December, so, um, there are still a lot of things to need to be addressed, the, but I will tell you, pretty much the financial side of that is not budged a whole lot. Um, I mean, they're expecting us to serve as many people that live in Hammond Ranch, that live in the City of Weed for thirty thousand dollars a year, and I told them, I said, I want that deal, so uh.
You just laughed, because that's really, it's what you can.
Yes, I did. I said, that's, that's, that's really funny, but um, anyway, but now there's, and and there's, you know, more to it than just that. Um, you know, of course, with the equipment that we would get and some of the other things that would come along with it, but yeah, we're still actively engaged with them and trying to uh sharpen the pencil a little bit more, so.
Thanks.
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
I still move.
I second it.
Move to second and to go to closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I'm going to the other.
I said the fairer words today.